Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the order, the February 25th, 2020, meeting of the Burnley County Commissioners. As with protocol as always, we will start with a solemn invocation and then a pledge of allegiance. Tonight, the pledge of allegiance will be led by Meiling Armijo.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Meiling. Announcements of additions, Madam County Manager, are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, there are no changes or additions tonight.
Good news, thank you very much. Okay, there are no proclamations. There are some certificates and awards tonight, and that would be me that is going to recognize the APS Selfless Senior. So if you are a selfless senior, if you would make your way up to the podium, we want to take a moment. This is a program that APS started many, many years ago, and what they do is they go out and actually look at each of the high schools around the county and the district and pick some of the brightest and those who have actually been selfless and done great community things for others. And I think it's always a testament to recognize our young people because they're the ones that give us hope for humanity and for the future. So tonight, we're going to do just that, and I'm glad some of them could join us. So without further ado, I'm going to read a certificate of recognition given to our selfless seniors. There are many of them on here, I'll read each, but there's only a few who could make it tonight, but all deserve to be recognized. Seniors of the Albuquerque Public Schools who have dedicated themselves to community service, kindness, and inspiring their peers and recognized each year for the positive difference they create in the community. These students are known as selfless seniors. Their service to the community includes invaluable time and energy from aiding patients at the Carey Tingly Hospital to public education on human trafficking. The selfless seniors are also recognized for the difference they make in the community without the expectation or need for recognition. For the 2020 selfless seniors of Albuquerque Public Schools, these students are Mercedes Mumert, Albuquerque High School, Danielle Benitez Deluna, Attrisco Heritage Academy High School, Melina Moreno, Sibyla High School, Juan Magaiwa, Magaiwo, excuse me, Del Nordi High School, Mia Jai Tafoya Eldorado High School, Ebuela Shendano Highland High School, Haley Hughes LaCueva High School, Kate Anderson Monzano High School, Patricia Sotella Chavira, Rio Grande High School, Alexia Menitos Sandia High School, Esperanza Biggs Valley High School, Zachary Josh Keuhu Volcano Vista High School, Juan Clark West Mesa High School, Isabel Ritz College and Career High School. Their service represents the philanthropic spirit of the student body of Albuquerque Public Schools and encourages every citizen to follow their example of community service. We thank them for their dedication to the community of Burnley County. Presented this day, February 25th, 2020, by all the Board of Commissioners, I thoroughly apologize for butchering many names on this list. I am terrible, I do not roll my Rs, it is bad. However, that takes nothing away from every one of you who has done an amazing job and gives us all hope for what we will see to come here in the community. Ma'am, if you'd like maybe to say a few words about the program, that'd be great, please.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and citizens. On behalf of the APS Education Foundation, I, Shannon Barnhill, the Executive Director, am more than proud and will keep my tears at bay to talk a little bit about how wonderful these young soon-to-be graduates are. We first would like to say thank you for inviting our Board of Education, unfortunately, they're at a meeting as well, but they send their regrets, but they would like to say thank you for honoring some of the most passionate and compassionate seniors in the class of 2020. Congratulations to these young people, we are very proud of them and know that they are great representatives of our county. Thank you. I just want to say 12 years ago, this is our 12th class of selfless seniors, and Frank Frost Photography is the one who came about with this idea, and he was just set to show the community that our students are here to contribute tremendous work in our community. And we did not know that they were doing this. As Frank would say, and I am going to quote him, "He was not looking to honor the spotlighted individuals in their schools like quarterbacks or the Val Victorian. He was instead wanting the opportunity to highlight the students who were selflessly giving back to their community and peers without expectation and praise." You can see that because I'm the one speaking, and they will not come up to this microphone, they are truly selfless. We tell each class of selfless seniors that they represent their respective schools and their philanthropic spirit of all students that grace their halls. We tell them that they also represent the school district and the entire student body, 82,000 of them, and inspire acts of service in underclassmen, middle school students, and elementary school students. Now we can tell them because of this recognition this evening that they also represent the generous spirit of the Burnley County. And remind us all that we can make time to give to those in need, sorry, champion for -- I'm getting emotional, these kids are amazing -- champion an important cause, give a voice to the voiceless, and in that spirit, we can make our county a better place to live. And if I may, I would like to invite those who are in the audience that are friends and family of these wonderful selfless seniors, if they just may stand so that we can also greet them and recognize them for providing such great, incredible young people. Thank you for this opportunity, and we recognize these individuals on April 17th at our Gold Bar event, and we can't wait to continue this recognition. Thank you very much for having us this evening.
Thank you so much. So we're going to take a picture, so if you wouldn't mind joining us up here, and I would not be doing my fatherly job if I did not say that my daughter, her senior year, was a selfless senior at Sandia High School, Emma Talbert, and I'm extremely proud, so it makes me proud to see all of you carrying on the tradition. Oh, Commissioner Casada, please.
Mr. Chair, real quick, I'm just a little jealous that I'm not getting a gold bar this year, and so I don't know if you ever had an APS gold bar, but they're like awesome, and when I sat on the school board, I got four years of them, and since I've been here, I don't get no gold bar.
Maybe we should start the tradition. Board and committee appointments will be on part of our consent agenda. At that point, Commissioner Colley would like to recognize one of his committee appointments right now, now number seven, public comment and communication. So, public comment, you will have two minutes to speak, you will be given a 30-second notice to wrap up when your comments, and a final notice when your time is up, when your name is called, please make your way down to the podium, state your name for the record before you begin your comments. Julianne?
We have four signed up this evening. Don Schrader, Chad Neminski, Diana Vargas, Geraldine Amato.
Don Schrader. Most movies made in New Mexico are crap. Glamorizing murder, money addiction, rape, robbery, rage, revenge, booze, or war. Most movies made in New Mexico are nothing to celebrate, regardless how many jobs and dollars. A stupid waste of time, talent, and money. Superb acting, well-designed sets, spectacular scenery, like using fancy China dishes to serve rotten garbage. Nothing uplifting, nothing inspiring, nothing life-changing. Sadly, most actors will take the par if the pay is high enough, regardless how violent or how shallow the movie is. If we damn violence on our streets, why watch movie violence for entertainment? Imagine if Breaking Bad had instead been Breaking Free, about meth users, meth dealers breaking free from meth. Would I plant poison plants in my food garden? So why plant poison in the garden of my mind? Why should actors be paid more money than farmworkers in the hot sun harvesting fruit and vegetables for us to eat? Do any elected officials have the conscience and courage to say all of this publicly?
Chad Neminski, Diana Vargas, Geraldine Amato.
My name is Chad Neminski. After 50 years plus in this state, and about 10 years getting involved in politics, I got fed up, and now, knowing how racist, sexist this state is. Well, so many claims, even city council, very outspoken about Mexican heritage. That's right, Mexican heritage. Well, what about other heritage? Now, let me, I remember Hispanic used to have problem with profiling by APD. Well, here is, once you have accent, and you're not Hispanic, of course, blonde and so on, I found it racist on the either side. Doesn't matter if that's Hispanic or Bi- Anglo, old timers. So now, let go to court system and sheriff. Well, we have in Albuquerque Association, Albuquerque State Bar Association. Well, who are the members? Lawyers and judges. And many of these judges, young judges, Hispanic all over the Metro Court, and old judges in District Court, guarded by Hispanic racist sheriff deputies. That's right, they are racist.
My name is Diana Vargas, and I'm from the South Valley of Albuquerque. I couldn't help but to notice all of the homeless people that I saw on my way coming to this meeting, and I remember it was three years ago when I started the Tiny Homes Project, which I'm here to address Commissioner O'Malley, just so you know, I'm coming at you. Three years I've waited to probably come here just because I had to let all the rage settle down before addressing Commissioner O'Malley. And so I started this Tiny Homes Project, and in fact, I believe I invited Commissioner O'Malley to the table, otherwise she wouldn't have been there so that all the news reports could claim to glory how Commissioner O'Malley is leading this charge. And what I find interesting, it's not that I want the recognition for the tiny homes, it's that it adds to the rest of the story that I'm about to tell, is that on the night of October 27th, I was ambushed in my office at 2121 Central by Steve Kramer, who ultimately killed a homeless man in my office. And in district open court, they mentioned the name Commissioner Debbie O'Malley in her official capacity. She said it like this, Commissioner Debbie O'Malley, from the Burnley County Commissioner. She wrote a letter in support of a man who had just been convicted by a jury of his peers of first-degree murder, and first-degree murder, what's premeditated, and then it's deliberate, and it's willful. And they weighed in ambush, and that's exactly what happened to me, I weighed in ambush. And so, you know, I didn't see you at the trial for you to have written such a letter for Steve Kramer for leniency as Commissioner Debbie O'Malley. I didn't see you there, so I don't think you knew all of the terms and conditions of what happened. And I realize I can't say everything I want to say in the two minutes because time goes really fast, but I have a show on Fox News, abq.fm, 93.7 FM, AM 1600, and I'm going to lay out exactly what Commissioner O'Malley did. She advocates for murderers in complete conflict with me, my life, and the rights of Vincent Gutierrez, who was ultimately killed.
Thank you very much, thank you, please.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner O'Malley.
Yeah, I think it's unfortunate that sometimes people are so bitter, I guess that's the only thing I can say. And --
You advocated for murderers.
No, I don't.
Yeah, you did, you wrote a letter in open court and said your name.
No, I didn't ask for leniency for this individual. No, I didn't.
Well, she's addressing me.
Well, I feel like, you know, someone had just accused me of something, which I think I need to respond to, and I think it's unfortunate. And this idea of that, you know, she started this project, I think that's ridiculous. So I just feel like I have to say something about it, and I, you know, I'm just basically disagreeing with her statements, and I think it's important that I say that. So, that's it, thank you.
When people are treated like criminals for speaking out, we're in serious trouble here. I'm in Albuquerque since March, and I am a victim of car theft, identity theft, gun theft, assault on two occasions, and I can't get any of my reports put in an active file because of who's at headquarters, not the frontline folks that I've talked to. And we in Albuquerque and 16 other New Mexico counties live in a federal DEA HITA, High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. Much of what is going on in this area is related to drug trafficking, but it's not published in Albuquerque Journal, it's not announced on KOB, but a lot of it is related to this. Remember retired Police Chief Tony Boozer, in his powder puff critique about how the police departments aren't run properly, came close to telling the truth when he said "The street criminal exists against a backdrop of corporate and government morality that raise troubling questions for the fate of the republic." Well, the republic doesn't exist, and we're talking about corporate and government criminality, not merely morality. I filed a complaint with the Citizen Police Oversight Agency, and all I got was everything back in my face, but what I learned, I was reporting an assault on the street at noon hour, and plausibly, it was an undercover cop that was put up to it. I don't hold her personally responsible. But what's interesting, they had a built-in witness to their little scam, and he announced what his name was, or at least the name he's called by. He works in the category like informants do. He's going to be on scene, if there's a real witness, he's going to counter, he's like a counter witness, a Jeremiah Crispin. He gave me his phone number and his name, and I always wondered, why did he give me a name he goes by, until I got this rebuff from that agency slam dunking my case. This nation can only be a land of the free if it is the home of the brave, and we have big trouble because many people here are just downcast cowards. They won't even speak up when people are being murdered in the hospitals and their drugs are being stolen. People will stand by and say, "I don't want to get involved, I might lose my job." What kind of people are we?
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you, Julianne. All right. Approval of minutes, so we've got the approval of the February 11th Administrative Meeting Minutes. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve.
All right, motion is second, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanously, we're going to approve the consent agenda, but there are a couple of Commissioners who would like to talk about a few things on there, so we'll start with Commissioner Colley first, and then we'll move over to Commissioner Casada, and then we will approve the consent agenda. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'm going to put out the giraffe, just in case anybody would have forgotten that the Safari Run is March the 22nd, just in case. Secondly, I would like to introduce, it's Section E under the approval of consent agenda, Darcy Bushnell is a selfless senior who has agreed to -- I think I'm in trouble for that one -- who has agreed to serve on the County Planning Commission. We're delighted that you're here, Darcy, thank you for coming. If you would like to say a brief hello, you're welcome to do so.
Hello, my name's Darcy Bushnell, and I am really honored to be appointed to this position, and I want to thank Commissioner Colley, who took a hook and grabbed me at church and said --
You're not supposed to tell everything you know.
Thou -- And I said, "Okay, I'll do that."
Trade secrets, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Darcy, thank you.
Thank you to Commissioner Colley, thank you, Darcy. Commissioner Casada?
Yeah, so I have item I, and it's the naming of Burnley County Commission Chambers, and if I could have Ken Sanchez's, if anyone's here on his behalf, to come down to the podium, and I think it's daughters here, and his family, yeah. So, as you know, we're building a new chambers, and so with item I, I thought that it would be appropriate to name this chambers after Ken Sanchez, okay, it's going to be hot. So, Ken was a great leader, as you all know, I don't have to speak on the kind of man that he was. He was also, he was the county commissioner, he was the city councillor. I'll just say it this way, I didn't go to an event, I didn't go to a funeral, I didn't go to a wedding, I didn't go to anything that Ken Sanchez wasn't at. Every ribbon cutting, everything that happened to be happening on the West Side, he's been an advocate for our side forever. And we lost somebody that was really important to our community, and I know that his family lost the leader of their family, and, you know, this job of his, I think shortened his life. His commitment to this community shortened this man's life because he loved this community so much that he was willing to sacrifice that to do what was right for the community and for the people that he loved. And he loved everybody in New Mexico, and he loved everybody in Albuquerque, and as a leader, he, you know, he worked both sides of the aisle, he didn't care if you were a Republican or a Democrat, he didn't care about any of that. Once he was elected, what he did is he worked for his constituents, and he worked for people. And that's the kind of leader I hope one day to be, and I based my decisions on that, and I just thought it would be appropriate to honor him in a way, in a building that we haven't even built yet, and to show that that's how much we cared about a man who did so much for us. So, I mean, that's basically what I wanted to say, and if you'd like to say a few words, I would be honored that you would.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Casada, that means so much to my family. On behalf of myself, my brothers, my sisters, Cynthia, my dad's life partner, this is such a tremendous honor. You know, when I was, I believe, a senior in high school, very, you know, naive, immature, I thought I was going to lose my dad when I realized he was running for public office. And I realized I didn't lose my dad, he was there every day, we all know he was, you know, always around, but I gained a whole family from the city. I gained, you know, friends, family that he made on the commission, on the city council, and those relationships will be able to carry on through his death, and hopefully, you know, his legacy will live on forever with this amazing blessing that we have today. Thank you.
I want to thank you all, I appreciate that, he'd be so excited, I know he's so excited. So thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
I also want, I just wanted to say, you know, that I'm really honored to support this recommendation by Commissioner Casada, and he, you know, I had the privilege of knowing Ken for many years, served with him on the city council, and just a lovely person, very kind, very generous man, and I think many people have mentioned how much he loved the city, and he loved the whole city. He was all about promoting Albuquerque, yes, he was an advocate for the West Side, but I mean, he was there to support other sections of the city as well, and he saw the need really to promote, you know, downtown and all of that, so, you know, of course, of course we miss him, I believe that, and, you know, Cynthia and I talked about it, that it's still very hard to believe that he's gone, and I think he'd just be really honored and real tickled about this whole thing. And so I think that, I want to thank you, Commissioner Casada, for bringing this forward. I think that's a really lovely tribute to such a wonderful man. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. So we're going to approve the consent agenda now? Items? Yes? Items, yes ma'am?
I'm sorry, there was one item that I just had a couple of questions about.
Okay.
And I know that Betty is here, and it's for the fair market rents for Cybold Village, just had a couple of questions about that.
Okay, do you wanna? Pull it off? Okay, so that's a motion, would there be a second for that? Second? Okay. Any opposed? Okay, we'll pull that one off and go through that, that'll happen after the consent agenda, we'll make that the, is that okay to make that the first item after Julianne? Or where would you like to put it?
It should be heard as 11B.
11B, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. Okay, well, we'll go ahead and approve the consent agenda, which, not the least of which on here is the recognition of our new chambers in honor of Commissioner and Councillor Ken Sanchez, so deserves special recognition. So, I move to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? All right, we have a second by Commissioner Colley and Casada both, and we will get AR numbers here, all in favor say, or, yeah, first and a second, so, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, unanimously. Madam Clerk, can I get some AR numbers, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, J2 will be, wait a minute, no, I better back up, I'm sorry, A1 will be AR 2020-23.
Thank you.
B1 will be 202024, AR 2024, excuse me, J2 will be FR 202025, M will be AR 2020-26. That's it.
Do we have N?
And then one ordinance number?
Oh, an ordinance, I'm sorry, AR OR 2020-6.
Thank you. And then we'll get one for L when we discuss that here in a minute. Thank you very much, thanks for remembering that. Okay, so we've got all of that. Number 10, adoption of ordinance amendment to county code, there are none of those, so number 11, we are adoption of resolution economic development. Madam Clerk, can I get a resolution number, please? AR number, sorry, for 11A.
Yes, sir, 11A is AR 2020-7, 27.
Excellent, thank you so much.
11B would be 2020-28.
Excellent, thank you so much. We've got Mailei Ormiho, and then this is sponsored by Commissioner Colley, so we'll start with Mailei. Mailei?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends the approval of the inducement resolution authorizing the Bernalillo County Commission to approve an industrial revenue bond application on behalf of Hotel McCoy, Albuquerque. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Colley, any questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, I'm delighted to carry this for the Economic Development Office, it's one of the wonderful, one of the wonderful things that we're able to do. This is a building that presently is standing vacant in an area where we need things to look good and be good. We're grateful that a developer has come forward to do that, and we're very grateful that the office has been able to marshal the support around the county's resources to assist with that process. So I think this is the best of many different choices, and delighted to make the motion at the appropriate point that the Commission approve this.
Well, someone asked me today, they're like, "So, what happens in the county?" And I said, "A lot of good stuff." They're like, "No, really." I go, "Economic development, that's what happens in the county." I mean, there is an agenda that goes by, that not one commissioner isn't supporting enhancing our quality of life through economic development, and I just continue to be amazed and appreciative and supportive of that, because that helps create jobs, create opportunities, and create a county that's vibrant for its citizens. So, anyway, Mailei, you and your team, thank you, and to each of the Commissioners, I thank. So, with that, I'll go ahead and accept a motion to approve 11A, which is the industrial revenue bond for the Hotel McCoy. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to move that the Commission approve AR 2020-27.
Excellent, can I get a second? Second by Commissioner Casada, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you so much. Okay, we're on now 11B, which is the item that we pulled off consent. Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Betty, I was just looking at the numbers for the fair market rents, and I just had a question about how they were determined, it was just a very simple, you know, spreadsheet, well, I don't remember if it was a spreadsheet, but just a simple column, and then you had, so the first question I have is, does that, do those rents include utilities as well?
Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, they do not, they are fair market rents determined by HUD.
Okay, so those are fair, okay, so this is public housing?
They are vouchers.
Okay.
And you see Brad on here, that's the rental assistance determination, so may I take a minute to explain that to you?
Yeah, I'm confused, okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
All right. So these were 21 units that were multifamily units, and they were funded by a HUD program, it was capital funds. Those, that funding source had been cut over the years, in the last 10 years, to give you an idea, went from $200,000 to, this previous year, to $26,000. We moved this revenue source to vouchers, so this will now be a voucher funding stream that stays with these units. So it increased the revenue stream for these 21 units, so that the vouchers now are project-based vouchers that stay with the units, and as the rents increase, so will the revenue. So the project-based vouchers, HUD increases fair markets rents, so will the revenue.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. You know, it's always, I come back to my concern about, you know, rents and the ability of people to be able to sustain them, especially families. We're just getting that gap, it just continues to get bigger and bigger, as I've mentioned before.
Correct.
And we have people with more vulnerability, more than we have ever had before, and so sometimes when you look at a family of four, and they've gotta do childcare, and there's probably two incomes, and they're just barely making it, and we have lots of families like that, so I just, I'm probably hypersensitive to those sorts of things, and just want to make sure that whatever we're doing, that we're really not making that, you know, really helping out with the, helping with those families.
Right, and just to clarify, Chair and Commissioner, these are seniors, these are 21 senior housing units, so we're very sensitive to their income stream, thus why it's more important to make them project-based voucher and have that assistance available to them.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Betty, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. So with that, we already have a AR number, would you like to make a motion on that, Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I mean, I move approval.
Okay, nice, okay, Commissioner Colley's second, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed? All right, passage in, say, "Thanks, Betty."
You're welcome.
Commissioner O'Malley? All right. We are at item 12, which is approvals, they've already all been approved, so now we're at 13, discussion. Margarita, it's on you, behavioral health, and then we got 2020 census updates, so let's roll.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'll do my best to help you make the record of the shortest meeting.
Okay, that was really good, thanks, next? Just kidding, just kidding.
Mr. Chair, Margarita Chavez Sanchez, Bernalillo County Behavioral Health. So tonight, we're just doing our third quarter update, much of this information we covered in the second quarter update, however, just the numbers have been updated. Again, our intention is to just make sure that the Commission and the public is aware of our progress on each quarter. So, again, the slide that is up now, and you all have copies of the slides as well, is, speaks to the revenue generated over the past couple of years. The current fiscal year, this is our current revenue, we're at $13.9 million for our current fiscal year. Again, the total revenue that's been received for the Behavioral Health GRT is $95,797,163.30, and again, what is expensed is in that following column of 21, with a balance of 74.
So that 21, though, should go up another 20 when we actually expense the money with you and him in the crisis triage, right?
Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Good, that's good, good for the record, okay, thank you.
So, the balances, the balance speaks to all of the dollars that have been appropriated, and what's expensed is what's actually in the pockets of the providers and/or the entity that we're working with. So this breaks down our reoccurring allocations, and so as you know, we're generating $22.5 million every year, that is our total reoccurring amount and our reoccurring allocation. Again, looking at that total amount of 22.5, we have spent 21 million, $820,510.67, so we almost are completely expended of that annual recurring dollar. So what the remainder of the available balance of that recurring dollar is, is $679,000. So in the grand scheme of things, we have a very small amount left in the recurring allocations. Non-recurring allocations, again, the total amount that has been expended in the, or allocated in the non-recurring is 67 million, I'm sorry, 62 million, with a fund balance, again, that fund balance is important for us to keep, or within the one-time dollars, I apologize, we have been asked to keep a 20% reserve, so that 20% reserve is also factored into this total amount. Now, again, in our, in our non-recurring dollars, we have a small deficit of $428,000, and again, we see that that will change significantly in the coming fiscal year as those one-time dollars will continue to roll. For example, mobile crisis teams, the mobile crisis teams are not spending the full million, and at the end of the fiscal year, if that full million is not expended, it'll roll back into the one-time dollars. So these are your available funds, right? So on the reoccurring available balance is $679,000, and then there are no non-recurring available funds. So this is a hard slide to see, but again, we printed this out for you, this breaks out each one of the projects that has been approved to date. So again, part of the update is a couple of pieces that you will see at your next ABCGC and next BCC meeting, there is a current project that Commissioner Casada has been working with us very closely for many, many years on, which is our school-based health centers. So that has officially been vetted and approved through our subcommittees and through our steering committees, and it will be on the ABCGC agenda on Thursday. So we have, there you go, we have the, an $800,000 one-time expenditure in that, and that would be for capital on school-based health centers, and then a recurring amount of $800,000 for operations of school-based health centers. This again will be an RFP, as all of our other projects will be, will, once we get the final approval, that will go out to an RFP as well. Intensive case management for high utilizers, I think a couple of meetings back, we did a presentation on our high utilizer study that we have been doing, we met with each of you, I think individually, to talk about our high utilizer study, and this was looking at our folks that are high utilizers of MDC, high utilizers of the care campus services, and emergency room services. So the premise behind this project is dedicating an intensive case management team who will work to engage those clients who are on that high utilizer list, to pull them off of that high utilizer list and plug them into services, as opposed to continuing to hit the jail, continuing to hit the EDs.
On that, on the school-based health clinics, how many schools will we be able to support with the agreed-upon funding?
Mr. Chair, it varies. So, based on our research, we see an average of about $200,000 a year in operation costs for a school-based health center. Now, it varies across that board because it depends on the entity, so for example, if it's an FQHC, they have a higher capacity to get Medicaid reimbursement, and because they can bill at a higher reimbursement rate, their revenue is higher, and thus their need for alternative funding sources are lower. So we believe that that'll vary amongst the providers and who bids on those dollars. Now, this proposed, the way that this proposal is written, is that it may also be existing school-based health centers who would like to expand their services. So if there's existing school-based health centers in the community who also want to add a weekend day, this may help to fund a weekend, staff for a weekend day, or if there's an existing school-based health center who's not providing behavioral health services, and they want to add behavioral health services to their existing paradigm, they can add that as well. Now, another big piece that Commissioner Casada has been working with us on, is this is not limited to middle school or high schools, this is, can be expanded between elementary, middle, and high schools. There is also a recommendation within that language of the proposal, that there is the ability and the capacity for these school-based health centers to not only serve the students, but to serve the community in that space. So parents who are picking up their children, they work in eight to five, and they need to pick up their children, and they can't access the clinic in the community, we want these school-based health centers to also be open after hours, so that the parents can also access services at the school-based health center. So again, this is, there is an ability, this will still be an RFP process, and we'll see what we get from the community, but this proposal allows for that open level of any existing or new school-based health center to expand capacity or build to address the gaps in the community. So I mentioned the intensive case management, again, we're really excited about being able to work with that piece, if you remember the presentation we did, the person who's at the top of the list of the school-based health centers, at the very top of that list, has been to the ER in the last 18 months over 280 times, and so this is a person that we absolutely want to wrap around, get them connected to services, so that they're not continuing to go to the ER or jail. Peer case management for aging population, as you know, we are working with University of New Mexico and the SG2, who is a contract firm that they hired to really do a market analysis of projection over the next 10 years. They have let us know that the two areas that are gonna increase significantly is our aging population, mental health services for our aging population, and the gap of services for youth. And so this is, we have not done any projects that have focused on an aging population, and so this will be a first project that's focusing on that target population. And our bridging behavioral health, so we have received criticism for many, many years that we have not done a great job about marketing and getting our word out about what we're doing. To your point, Mr. Chair, earlier about what the county is doing, the county's doing a lot, right? And so what we need to do is do a better job of really marketing and communicating with the public about what we're doing. And so we passed a proposal for bridging behavioral health, I believe, a year ago, or maybe a little bit past that, and so we're asking for an increase in those dollars, so that we can do a robust marketing campaign to get that word out to the community. This also includes what many of you have on your calendar already, and we've begun to announce, we will be hosting the inaugural Breaking Burials Behavioral Health Conference in May, and we are excited to be using the, to have the secretary, the cabinet secretaries from the health sector, I'll speak on a panel, the governor will be doing our keynote address in the morning, and we're excited to invite the community as a whole to this conference, as well as national partners. So we've already had outreach from national partners and across the state of people who are interested in attending and presenting in this conference, so we're really excited to get that message out as well. Two other big updates, number one, about a couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Piscotti joined us and Julie to announce a million-dollar allocation for our new training and education providers, those providers are ARCA, New Mexico Black Mental Health Coalition, New Mexico Motivational Interviewing and Training Center, and the National Alliance on Mental Illness, so we're really excited to be working with those providers. Also, on the care campus, update for our crisis stabilization unit, this crisis stabilization unit is going amazing. We have, right now, we're at a capacity of eight clients, and we daily gain a waiting list, and so we're really excited about the work that we're doing, and I think it's important to really think about the clients that we're serving. One client that came to us had been homeless for 14 years, in and out of the jail, in and out of the ERs, our intensive case managers wrapped around him, we found out he was a veteran, we helped him get an ID, we helped him get a copy of his discharge paperwork, and he's in housing, and he's maintaining his stability, he's on MAT and doing well, and this is the first time he's been housed in 14 years. And this is, this is why we do this, right? This is the whole reason why we do this, is we really want to be able to help pull people out of that cycle of coming out of those high utilizer systems, and while every story doesn't always work out that way, it's those stories that make us do what we do and continue to be there for people to meet them where they are in that. Again, as you know, a couple of months past, we passed the expansion, funding for the expansion on the care campus, we're continuing to progress forward with that, our projection is that we will be putting out an RFP in April for build-out on the campus, and so again, there's a lot of movement happening, we're projecting about 18 months to the time that we'll have our outpatient clinic open and ready, as well as the additional expansion on our campus. Last piece that I want to mention that's really important, sorry, this is my last one, I'll keep it, keep it brief, the Behavioral Health Initiative and the Department of Behavioral Health Services has been invited to present at the National Council of Behavioral Health Conference in Austin in April, and And we are receiving the Innovation of the Year Award through the National Council of Behavioral Health. So this is the largest behavioral health conference that has, happens globally. We're really excited to receive that. Um, and I think it's just important for you all to know that because you all have played a very important hand in all the work that we've been doing. And we're really excited to, um, to go to the conference and receive the award and bring it back to the county.
Well, I think everyone can see, I mean, you know, we, we passed this opportunity, a number of years ago. And now we've really got momentum. I mean, sometimes I think people get worried because they're like, oh, we have all this money, we're not spending it. But I think we've taken the right amount of time. We're spending it appropriately. We've now got momentum. We've got big programs that take time to vet out. And so I commend you and your team, obviously, in taking that correct amount of time, regardless of how much we have and how much people think we should spend. I appreciate the fact that we're spending it correctly and it will have a major impact, and already is in our community. So Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, um, I just had a couple of, uh, and I guess I could just get some more information, though. Are all of these upcoming projects before us on Thursday for approval?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, uh, yes, the school-based health center is before you. The other items are still being vetted in committee.
Okay. So, uh, and maybe we can just meet, I, I'd really like to talk a little bit more about this intensive case management for high utilizers. I did hear the presentation. I'm, um, I'm just a little concerned about that. And I'll tell you, it's, uh, we have some folks, as we know, who are in and out of the system. Uh, and, um, sometimes I think we think, oh, you know, we just wrap enough of services around them that somehow things are going to change. And this is a very large sum of money reoccurring. And I think, um, sometimes we have to recognize that, um, uh, you know, in, in terms of resources, you know, what, what we're able to do, actually able to do, and really make changes to folks' lives and then realize that sometimes there's some things we can't do. So I, I think we need to have that discussion because that's a big, that's a big item. Uh, you know, 800,000 dollars a year. And I don't even know how long you're looking at that period or, because this would be almost like a pilot. Um, and then on the other issue of, of, you know, what you talk about, talking about what we do, I think it's really important that when we start to do that, and I think I mentioned that to you in terms of, because this isn't about branding, it's about, it's about public, um, it's about communication. So if we say we're going to do something, we need to have at the other end, the op, you know, the ability to do it. Uh, it's not enough to say we, you know, we're doing this great job. So people will start to say, okay, well, I have an issue here. So where do I go? And then at the end, um, where do they go? Uh, that there's a functioning organization or agency that will help them. And that's where we run into some, some issues sometimes, is that people say, well, I tried to navigate the system or I tried to get somewhere and I couldn't find any help. Um, so that's, that's my thinking is that if we're going to promote, um, you know, that we're going to help people, that we have the capacity to do it within these agencies. Um, and that we don't fall short of that promise. So those are the only things, uh, that I, that I'd be concerned about. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, uh, Madam Commissioner, I completely agree with you. I think it's, um, absolutely around marketing, um, in a way that the people who need to access the services help to get that information, right? It's not about just saying, oh, we've spent all this money and this is what we're doing. But it's, these are the services we've created and this is how you access them, right? There is absolutely a greater need for that. And I think, um, the bigger question is, right? We've been working to build out these programs to help address these gaps. The bigger question that we are going to really continue to tackle for a period of years is how do we create a continuity and a system of care, right? As opposed to funding project, 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 project. How do we create a continuum of care that if someone flushes up on one system and it's not appropriate, how can they pick up the phone and say, hey, I got someone, let's plug them in over here? Um, and really having that systems approach. And so to that end, that's part of us trying to pull providers together, trying to have a streamlined approach and, and working across those siloed areas. Not law enforcement over here and housing over here and community supports over here, but bringing kind of all of those partners together to work to create that continuum of care. So I really agree with you, Commissioner.
Great job. Way to go, Margarita. Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. Next is, I think Bernadette with the 2020 census update.
Good evening, Chairman Talbert and Commissioners Bernadette Mieda, um, Special Projects Coordinator, Community Services. Um, we're here tonight to give you an update on what we're doing on the census. And I have with me this evening Christina Nelson, who is our census coordinator. And she's been in since, uh, late December. And she is actually going to do the presentation. And we'll stand for questions when we're done.
Chairman Talbert and Commissioners, my name is Christina Nelson and I'm the Census Coordinator for the City-County Complete Count Committee. As you are aware, uh, the city and the county received a grant from the state for 594,000 dollars for our census efforts. Tonight, I would like to give you an update on these census efforts. The city and the county have an established complete count committee. The goal of this committee is to ensure a complete and accurate count of every person within the city of the county. The city and the county have worked, been working collaboratively on this committee to ensure that every single person gets counted. Our committee has approximately 50 members and five active subcommittees. The city and the county are supporting members through in-kind services and in-house resources, including printing, mapping, and design. Through our grant with the state, we've been able to subcontract with community-based organizations. These community-based organizations are providing targeted outreach to hard-to-count populations within our community. This slide shows the names of the organizations that were awarded through our first round of procurement, the amount they were awarded for, and their target population. A total of 260,000 dollars was awarded through our first round of procurement. These organizations are already well into their outreach efforts for census activities. After the first round of procurement was completed, there were still gaps in our target population outreach coverage. So we went through a second round of procurement. These are the names of the organizations that have been awarded through our second round of procurement, the amounts they were awarded, and their target population. Through the second round, we awarded a total of 130,000 dollars to these organizations. And these organizations are just in their beginning phases of their outreach, um, activities. City and county entities are also expanding our census outreach coverage. We're working with senior affairs to ensure that seniors who are homebound and seniors who are utilizing city services get counted. We're working with libraries to ensure that people have a place to go to complete the census. We're working of office with, we're working with the Office of Neighborhood Coordination, Parks and Rec, and more. After the census goes live, which is March 12th, the city and the county will be hosting census questionnaire assistance centers throughout the city and the county. At these assistance centers, people will be provided with a private place to complete the census. They will have access to a computer or wifi. And they will, the census centers will be staffed by people who can answer any of their questions. So these questionnaire assistance centers will be essential to ensure everyone has the opportunity to self-respond. The city, county, complete count committee, and these funded organizations are all working together for a coordinated media outreach strategy. We're working, um, in unison with the media strategy that's going on at the federal level and on state level with, um, Media Desk. And our outreach is targeted specifically towards the hard-to-count populations within our community. We're going through both traditional media means and non-traditional, including ads on buses, billboards, social media ads, um, and more. This outreach map shows the outreach activities that have taken place as of February 13th with our funded organizations in the city and the county. This map is, um, a tool that was created by the city so that we can map all of our activities and have, has been really helpful as we're trying to cover the entire city and the county with our activities. Um, this is only as of February 13th, so as the census approaches, there should be and will be dots all over the map. Our census efforts by the city and the county, um, we have expended a total of 270,000 dollars thus far. And that doesn't include the funding that was awarded to the organizations through the second round of procurement, which was again 130,000 dollars. So as I conclude, I would like to thank you, Chairman Talbert and Commissioners, for your support. Your support has been essential in our census efforts. And will be essential, uh, as we move forward to ensure that every single person gets counted. I stand for questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Casada?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so I, I do have a couple of questions and a comment. Um, I think my first question would be, um, do you, do you know how APS is getting involved in this? Um, uh, I know you have city and county, but I think it's really important, um, that, you know, the children are involved, and this is the reason why. And in my community and, uh, in, in my district, most of the people who are connected mostly to what's happening in the government or what's happening through the census or whatever's happening out in, in, in the real world, I guess, uh, is the students. And they're able to communicate with their parents, what they need to do, what, what they can do, how they can do it. And usually that's a good resource to reach out to people. I think that, you know, that don't go to the libraries, that don't go to take services, that don't, you know, um, their kids are in school and their kids can take back information. Um, I'd like to know if we're teaming up with APS or they have their own thing going on. Uh, and then number two, um, I just, it's more of a comment, I think. I just want our community to know that, you know, especially in the South Valley, you're seeing more and more presence of ICE agents. Um, and I really truly believe that that's a game plan to keep people from being involved in the census, from coming out of their homes or going out and doing, uh, their normal things. And I think that they cannot do that. I think it's really important that we count everybody, that we know who's here because those are the dollars that we use to make sure that we're doing the proper things for our community. So that's just my comment. And if you could answer my question, that would be awesome. Thanks.
Chairman Talbert and Commissioner Casada, thank you for your question and your comment. Um, I'll try to address both, actually. So as for APS, APS has their own complete count committee. So the same thing we're doing with the city and county, they're doing on their own. Um, we're working with them, so we do know a bit about what they're doing and how they're reaching out to the schools. As you mentioned, um, children are historically an undercounted population. So it's really, really important that we target that population. Also, the organizations that we're funding, um, specifically, um, America Praise and a couple others are working. They, they have members who are also on the APS Complete Count Committee, and then they're working together with them. So it's been a joint effort, um, trying to utilize those services and making sure that there's a person in every single school that's doing outreach to the students. And then, as you mentioned, then reaching out to their parents to ensure the parents are aware of how their children can be counted and then their households as well. Um, as for your comment about the South Valley, we also have organizations that are working specifically in the South Valley. Their messaging has been about your information is kept private, um, trying to build that trust and that confidence so people feel safe filling out their questionnaire, knowing that that information won't put them in a potential, um, situation. Um, so we're, we're working to address both of those things.
Thanks, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Pescotti?
I have a question. Do you have a strategy to find people in rural areas? Um, my district encompasses the East Mountains and there's people totally off the grid. I would think the West Mesa has issues of its own. So can you talk a little bit about that?
Mm-hmm. Um, Chairman Talbert and Commissioner, uh, we are specifically funding an organization, um, who's going out to the East Mountains. So that was in our second round of procurement. We noticed that there was nothing touching out there. So we will have a targeted outreach plan for people who are out there, um, specifically addressing issues like they're not going to get their census to their mailbox. And educating them about that, what they should be looking forward to. Um, so we are looking at more of those re, those, uh, rural areas and ensuring that there's an outreach strategy to them.
All right. Thank you both very, oh, Commissioner Colley?
I, I can just say a thank you to the, the two presenters tonight. They came to the neighborhood meeting. They were wonderfully explanatory about all these things. We, we have a lot of folks at, at the neighborhood meetings in, in District 3. So thank you for your time and effort and energy and the way in which you all both, you know, dealt with the folks who were there was, was really, really wonderful. And I thank you for it.
Thank you.
Great work. Thanks. It's very important. So appreciate it. All right. Number 14 announced with the next commission meetings, Tuesday, March 17th, 2020 at 9:00 AM. In these chambers will be the budget hearings. Tuesday, March 17th, special zoning meeting at 3:00 PM in these chambers. And Tuesday, March 24th, will be our administrative meeting, 5:00 PM in these chambers. If there's no other business, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.